And I could find the letter containing it.
Yeah.
How do you use the trees?
Okay.
You're right.
Same as our.
Jane, how you doing?
I'm crazy.
Doing well.
Oh, yeah, good.
Good.
Percentage.
Thank God. I'm sorry.
Thank you for it.
Too much.
Okay, yeah, I'll take a look at that.
I've got the second, third weekend in November scheduled. I'm gonna go out hunting, but the third weekend, that Sunday, Father Harley set up for like a basic dedication at church. I'll probably put in Saturday evening on that. I'd rather wait until Sunday afternoon. I ought to be here in time for that. She texts me and asks if that date is okay. Of course, it doesn't matter when it is. I'm gonna be here, you know, I'm hoping you're gonna be there regardless. So I'll call him, you know, whatever.
I talked to Bruce Haver, he's been camping like, like Gibson or Lake Gibson or something. And he said, it's right on the lake and all full of them.
Yeah. Yeah, I might just get, we did zero this, this summer with the baby and all. Probably didn't do.
Yeah, we went a couple of weeks ago in a milk parade.
My neighbor just went there a few days ago again.
It's nice. They're all right on the water.
Uh huh. Yeah.
Holy God, call man one more. We've been drinking everything, okay? Something with that water.
I got, yeah, just wanna, is it up there for me? Oh, I could take that, I mean.
We get more. Here.
Oh, you boys go through that?
Twenty days out.
Oh, you, he didn't go either?
Time frame. We won't pay. Oh. Look, my, look, she, the guys are coming soon, Dad. I did do. Yeah, two to three.
Are you on three?
That third one. Hopefully we can get on rotation and get that going. I'm happy to listen.
Live now. So you got a video? Test, test, one, two, test. Can you hear that? Test, one, two, test. Okay, so you got that? Oh, so you can, I can hear, I can hear me talking to myself. You were able to hear my, my test, right?
I know. She put, she put the cow on there too, but I guess she can do it here too? I don't know. She put the cow minutes. So really, we should just be doing thi- this one, special meeting, is I was, that's what I would do. And then forget, and do that one at the cow. But I wouldn't, okay.
You ready? I just called the city council meeting for November 3rd, two, 2020, to order, please. Roll call.
Tim?
Here.
Amber, here. Gene?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Arthur?
Here.
Dawn?
Here.
And if we could stand for pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done.
But you guys, I thought it was kinda cool hearing those kids say they pledged allegiance. Pretty neat. Let's see, before we have approval of tonight's agenda, I would like to add item I. Christmas bonus. And with that said, I would accept approval for tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve.
Take it.
Roll call.
Arthur?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Moving down to item number five, this is gonna be approval of the city council minutes from October 6th, 2020, and the special meeting minutes from October 20, 2020, and taking out the cow minutes from October. I don't know why that's in there. I think it was just a typo.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Take it.
Thank you. Roll call.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Larry?
I'm staying.
Arthur?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Moving down to item number six, this is comments from citizens. Are we on Zoom tonight also, James?
Yes.
Okay, so for those attending on Zoom, if you would like to comment, please make a wave, I believe is how you do that. And I'll first start off with anybody in our audience here this evening. If you'd like to speak, please come step up to the podium. Give your name, address, keep your comments to three minutes or less. Seeing none, I would accept a citizen on Zoom if they would like, once again.
We have no one on Zoom.
Excellent. So I'm going to assume that we have nobody speaking tonight. So moving on down then. Do we have any ordinances on this evening?
I didn't see any.
Don't see any. So I think we can bypass number seven, if that's permissible by the council.
That's good.
Moving on to item number nine. I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Ackman. What I've done, counsel, is I've asked Mr. Ackman to prepare for your, your entertainment this evening is roles and duties of elected officials, and the reason for this is because we have two new council people, specifically one person that just got appointed. And I kinda felt like it was needed to make sure that I have our city attorney kinda go over some of the guidelines for you this evening, and if you have any questions of him as to, you know, what your roles are and what you can do, what you can't do, by all means, this is your time to, to ask questions. So without further ado, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Ackman.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel. Yeah, I think it is a good time to revisit. I put my book over there just for y'all to see the thickness of it. Those are the Arkansas statutes that, not, not all of them that apply to municipalities, but most, the most common ones that, that, that we use. And there's a lot of law that you will work under and work through. But there's quite a bit that reoccurs. You'll see it at every meeting, or you'll see it on a regular basis as, as you serve. And so I, what I thought I would do, I provided a memo that is a, just a very short sort of overview of some topics. It is by no means entirely comprehensive. It is by no means covers everything that you're gonna see. I'll, I'll tell you right now, one big glaring omission from this is planning. And planning for any city is a big part of, of what a city does, and is a big part of what your role. You will see a, a whole host of planning issues while you serve on the, on the city council. And that's left out simply because it's too big of a topic to, to even touch on here, and, and, you know, that's something that we can, we can work on as, as we go forward, but particularly for Tawny Town too, and the position that Tawny Town's in is, you know, regardless of, of what happens in the economy, and, you know, what direction the country's going, then this is an area of growth, and Tawny Town's an area of growth. So planning is gonna be something that you, that you see on a regular basis, and that will maybe address at a different time. But more or less wanted to go through on some of the functioning, some of the body that you sit in, and some of the roles that you, that you all sit in, so we can just kinda be familiar. And so I'm, I'm not gonna read everything in here, and I think what I'll do is, is try to hit some of the highlights. Please read and ask me questions. I often will field a call or a question from a council member about an FOI issue, or about a conflict, or about how, you know, how something is done procedurally, and that's very, very common. Oftentimes, council member might ask the mayor that question, and the mayor might answer it, or mayor might, might send it my way to, to answer as well, but hopefully this will kinda give you a little bit of, of an overview. And again, if there are any questions, feel free to ask, or call me, or send me an email, or whatever I can do to help. But one of the big, there's gonna be a couple like kind of overarching issues that I want you to think about, and one of them is by all appearances, because of a change in the law that occurred about nine years ago, Arkansas is a home rule state, which means there's basically kinda two schools of thought on how municipalities are able to function. You are a political subdivision of the state of Arkansas. You're created by the state. But, and you're allowed to exist by the state, but there are some states where you're only allowed to, to have the powers that are given to you specifically by the legislature. The others, that's, that are called home rule, that say you can do anything that's not prohibited, or not already undertaken by, by the legislature. And in 2011, we switched to a home rule state that has not been challenged or really explained in the, in the courts. But kinda everybody has taken that to mean that we have a little more flexibility. We, we, we don't have to look for a specific grant of authority from the state, rather, we can operate in areas where we have been granted authority, and we can operate in areas where the state does not operate. And so that's just one of the other, one of the overarching issues. Another one is what type of capacity you are operating under while you do your work. And this applies to the city, this applies to the mayor, this applies to a planning commission, this applies to city council. And really, there's three different options, and one is that, you know, cities can act, or your board can act legislatively. That's legislation you ought to think of like as, as prospective laws that you are passing. Let's say you were gonna pass park regulations that said, you know, nobody in the pavilion past nine o'clock. That's a, that's a prospective law that applies to people going forward, and that is legislation. If you act administratively, you're applying law to a set of facts. And the, the difference between, a big difference between administration and legislation is with administration, you don't have that same level of discretion. If you are applying the law, the park law that said no people in the pavilion past nine o'clock, the mayor who's in charge of, ultimately in charge of enforcing that, is not able to say, well, you know what? I think 10 o'clock is a better, a better time, or I really think it ought to be eight. That's the legislative function, is setting, setting that time. The administrative function is just applying that law. And then there's another function, and it's more of a judicial, and you see it in a couple of instances, but you mainly see it in, in planning with board of zoning adjustments, and that's when you're giving relief to somebody who's, you fit certain criteria. So let's say that your house was built a little bit in a setback, and you need, you wanna do an expansion, and you've got a problem, well, you may have to come to the city and, and get a variance. Well, that's, that's judicial relief. And so there, those are the three main areas that cities can act. You will mostly see the administrative and the legislative, but I, I bring that up because kinda as you go forward in your career in public service, dealing with cities, you will see this come up again and again and again, that whether you are acting legislatively or administratively. And it really permeates almost everything you do. With my job, it permeates everything. It, it determines how things are appealed, how things are handled by courts. The, the reason is, is that when courts look at what you do as a city council, and if you are acting legislatively, they will give you discretion. They will say, you know what? We, we're not a city council person. We're not a mayor. That's best decided by, by cities. So therefore, unless it's crazy, we're gonna, we're gonna give them discretion. We're gonna allow them to do what they do. So a lot of what you do is, is you're given that discretion. Administratively is different. You're not given that discretion. And so when you act administratively, you know, a court can look at that and say, you know what? I think I have a better judgment on this, and they can overturn it. Another thing that has to come along with acting administratively is that it comes with some risk. When you act in your legislative capacity, we'll get into this a little bit in a bit, you are afforded an immunity that somebody who's acting administratively does not have. So the park ordinance, for example, nine o'clock, somebody doesn't like that. They sue the city. They say that's an arbitrary and capricious action should be overturned. That, that suits against the city. If the mayor comes to work tomorrow and decides, you know, I'm gonna fire somebody, I'm gonna let them go, and he fires him, and they sue the city, they can also sue the mayor individually, because he's acting in a administrative capacity. And what individually means is that his assets can be, can be sought in that, in that lawsuit. So acting legislatively and acting administratively have very different outcomes, and so we always wanna be very careful in, in, in how that, how that happens. But in general, with the, the mayor's duties on, on your council is that he or she is the president of the council. They preside over the meetings. They, the mayor's vote can be made to establish a quorum. If you notice, you guys are six. You have to have four, for a quorum, and so if you have three here and the mayor, the mayor can vote to establish a quorum. If you have three here and the mayor doesn't wanna establish a quorum, you don't have a quorum. If you have two here and the mayor, you don't have a quorum. So in order to act, you need to have, in, in any meeting to take action, you need to have a quorum. Another thing that the mayor can do is vote when the mayor's vote is required to pass something. It doesn't mean a tie. If, if three here vote for, three here vote against, the mayor does not have to vote. But it takes four votes to pass anything, rather, regardless of whether there's six people, five people, or four people present at a council meeting. And so if the mayor's vote is required to pass anything, with just a few very limited exceptions, then that's, that's when the mayor can vote. If it's five to, if there's a vote on something, on the, on our park ordinance, and it's five to one, the mayor can't pipe in and say, you know what? I really don't like that. Mark me down as a no vote. No. Only the mayor can vote when, and he can only vote affirmatively to pass something. If he doesn't vote, then it's like he's, you know, he's not, he's not gonna pass it. So the, the general responsibility of a mayor of first class, and Tawny Town is a first-class city now, though, is the administration of the, of the city, the day-to-day operations. The mayor does not make laws, although he can vote in, in very limited times. He can also veto a law. But the mayor is in charge with enforcing the laws, making sure that, that the city is staffed, and that the, you know, kind of all the bases are covered on what, what the city is supposed to be doing. But, but that's the general responsibility, along with making, you know, the, keeping the public peace, the kind of public safety part of it. City council, on the other hand, is vested mainly with legislative power. There's a few instances where you will act administratively. If you have a final plat that comes to this body, you're not cloaked with discretion saying, you know what? I, I don't like that development. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna turn it down. You have to apply the, the development standards to the plat, and it's, it's administrative application and not a legislative application. But in general, you're passing laws, you're passing budgets, you're approving the purchase of a swing set, or not approving the purchase of, of a swing set. That's all legislative. Rezoning property is a legislative function. And that is your role. And, you know, if you think about it a little bit, nobody else in the city has that role. That's only, that's only the city council has that role. So, you know, the, the, that comes with the purse strings, that comes with the, the laws and regulations of the city. But what that doesn't come with it is kinda what I call walking around authority. Walking around authority is sort of the day-to-day authority, and your only power is when you come together, have a quorum, and you vote. Once that, once you leave that meeting, you don't have authority to come up to city hall and to say, you know what? I, I'm gonna cut your shift in half, or, or something like that. That's, that's on the administration side. You're on the legislative side. So that's kinda where the division is. The mayor doesn't make laws, and the, the city council does not have the walking around authority. Let's see here. There is some descriptions there of city clerk, city treasurer, district judge, district clerk, and city attorney that you can read. The one thing I'll add is that we have a combined city clerk, city treasurer position, which the law allows you to do. You can, you can combine those, and the terms of office are there. An odd thing about district judges and district court clerks is it's a, very much a split role. We, we pay the money for it. We don't supervise. So for example, the district court clerk, we're responsible for the salary of that person, but we do not supervise that person. That's all under the, the judge. There's some stuff about liability that you can read. There, the, the, the main points there is that for torts, mainly negligence, public entities have tort immunity. So if there's a, you know, a crack on the sidewalk, if somebody trips and falls, if that happens at a Walmart, Walmart has liability insurance for that. Cities do not have liability insurance, and that's because cities are tort immune, so are states, so are counties. And so there's that tort immunity. I mentioned the legislative immunity earlier. As long as you're passing laws and you're in your legislative lane, you're gonna be afforded that legislative immunity. The most common time that I see councils lose their legislative immunity is employment issues. Like when, when you get involved in, you know, the, the, the dispute, the firing or the hiring, and that, that comes to council level, that's when that immunity starts to erode. And if you're involved in the termination of a, of an employee, which can happen, if that, if that becomes a council role, then, then that, you can lose that, that legislative immunity. So we're always very careful with that, and whenever, you know, fortunately, we haven't had that issue come up in quite some time. But when we do, there's gonna be a lot of legal advice around that, around that point, because that's something that we wanna be very careful about. Ordinances are a very common thing. We don't have one tonight, but we normally, normally do. The item right before I stood up was about waiving of the rule. This is a very old statute. It was back mainly in our agrarian days, when, you know, people's literacy wasn't as high as, as where it is now, and information was harder to come about. There is a rule that says any ordinance that's passed has to be read on three different occasions in full. You will probably have occasion to have an ordinance set before you that may be 20 pages long. So you can imagine how long that would take, and if you had to read that on three different meetings, how long that would take. And the reason was to, to get the information out, and people, it needed to be read, because people, not everybody could, could read. And, you know, times have changed, but obviously business has changed too, and sometimes there's lots of things that don't wait for three readings. So typically, it's been the practice of the city, and a lot of cities around here, that that rule is waived. And so that's a very typical thing that's done, and the ordinance is read by title only, and it's read just on one occasion, and the mayor will call for that, the council will vote on it, and if it passes, then I'll read just the title of the ordinances and not the entire ordinance itself, because it's assumed that everybody can, can fully read that if they want. Ordinances are different from resolutions. Resolutions are sort of expressions of intent, and they also are kind of action items. Like if you all were often have resolutions that are before you to, to do something, like to enter into a contract, or to adopt a policy, to buy something, and that's kind of like a one-time action. Where an ordinance, think of an ordinance as a law, something that's in place, and it's gonna have general applicability going forward. We have to publish those, and your, your choice is either to publish in the newspaper, or to post in five public places around town. So you have that posting requirement with, with ordinances that you do not have with, with resolutions. Also, another thing about ordinances is, is a referendum period. So anytime you pass an ordinance, somebody from the, the, the city, a, a registered voter from the city could take around a petition with sufficient signatures and have that ordinance be put on the ballot. And I think it's probably happened in, in the past before, every now and then. Seems like there's some issue in the area that will lend itself to people petitioning and putting on the ballot. But you can set that referendum period by ordinance, and in Tawny Town, it's 30 days, which is very common. So petitioners have 30 days to do that. And if you pass an ordinance, just a plain Jane ordinance, let's say our park ordinance, and let's say it did not have an emergency clause, that ordinance would go into effect 30 days after the petition period expires. If there, if it's an ordinance that needs to go into effect right away, that can be adopted with an emergency clause, and that requires a separate vote of the emergency clause. It requires to spell out the reasons why that needs to go into effect right away. And if it's passed, if it's adopted by the council, it's, and the council votes on the emergency clause, and it goes into effect right away. So oftentimes, when you have an ordinance before you, we'll read the title, there'll be discussion, there'll be public input. Eventually, there'll be a call to the vote. You guys will vote. If it passes, and if it has a emergency clause, there'll be a call for a motion to approve the emergency clause. the emergency clause and that'll be hap, happen by separate motion. And the mayor will call for all those, all those things. Let's see here. Another important point that's, that's in the memo here is that if you're going to adopt, pass a resolution, ordinance or do anything, it has to be in a public meeting. There, there is a no instance where you could have a meeting that is not a called meeting pursuant to the FOI and, and vote on any, vote on something and have that vote stand. If it ever happens, and it, it, it hasn't since I've been here. But if you ever have an instance where that does happen, we would have to redo what, anything in that meeting to have it be something that sticks. A couple of important things for you all to know. You are not allowed to have, if, if, if you have any type of interest, direct or indirect, with business of the city that, that needs to be put out in public in an ordinance to allow that to happen. So, you know, if you sell some product and the city uses that product, then there needs to be an ordinance on, with the city that allows that transaction to happen. And so it's a transparency sunshine type thing. So this one does come up every now and then. And usually when that happens, a council member or somebody will call me and say, hey, I've got, I've got this issue. You know, I'm part owner of this business and they're gonna sell, you know, this product or material or whatever to the city. Can we do that? And we'll, we'll talk through it. So just have that alarm bell go off in your mind, thinking about your own business interests. And when something affecting the city also affects that business interest, you know, that should be your notice. Okay, let me, let me ask Justin about that one. We'll go through it. We'll go through that analysis when that happens. The other thing is just because you're a city official, in no way can you ever have your, your water bill reduced. That's gotten people in trouble all over the state of Arkansas. And, you know, I, I don't think that's, I can't recall that ever happening here. But, but that's in the statute as a very, very particular thing. I guess it was a problem at some point in time. But late fees, water bills, any of that sort of thing, you know, they are what they are. And let's see here. I did have quite a bit on sort of finance and auditing that you all can look at. The city does go through a yearly auditing process with this water and sewer. We do fund accounting here. There are, within those funds are restricted funds. So you, you will often come across that. You'll, there are revenues that you receive for streets. There's revenues that you receive for water and sewer that you can't spend on other things. So if you have certain water sewer revenues coming in, you can't take those, put those into a pet project. They have to stay within those funds. Those accounts get audited. There's a lot of money that comes through water and sewer because you have a lot of people who use them. They also, at least for the time being, they have your water sewer charges, your, your, your trash, and that's on a monthly basis. And so those, that's something that we have an auditing firm do every year. And, and the results of those come to the, come to the board. The city also, the general fund gets audited through legislative audit, which is a division, is a part of the legislature, there's a committee, and they have auditors who audit public entities. And so they do that on a, every two-year basis. And again, that's something that, that audit comes before the, the city when that, when it happens. That's something that you all will, will vote on to, to approve. But on the outline on page seven, it has just in general, the various sources of revenue. We can get more specific on that if you all have, have questions. But that's generally the type of revenues that the city, the city receives. The last thing that I'll mention has to do with FOIA. Arkansas has, the FOIA is the Freedom of Information Act. And Arkansas has the broadest Freedom of Information Act of any state in the country. Why not? It's starting to erode. It's been, it used to be the third rail of Arkansas politics. If you touched it at Little Rock, if you tried to alter it, you'd get smoked by the press lobby. And, and that has, has been changing a little bit of, of recent, but it's still a very broad law to the extent that it, it, it supersedes attorney-client privilege, which is very rare. Normally in, if there's litigation that affects the city, I can't, I ha, I can only meet with this body ever in open session. We can't like keep people out and say, hey, we gotta talk about this, this litigation. I need to give you all some confidential information. There is no confidential information. But the two important parts about Freedom of Information Act are open meetings and open records. And they, they need to be understood. Open meetings is anytime there's, there's, it's been interpreted to mean anytime there's two of you or more that are talking about an issue that's going to come before the council. So let's say that we know that my, my park ordinance is going to come before. Amber doesn't like that and wants to talk to Tim about it and say, Tim, are you gonna vote for this thing? That's, that's a, that's an item that's going to come before the, the council. That discussion needs to happen at a called meeting that's open to the public. Now, if, if the discussion is, hey, we need to have a, if it's Gene calling you guys and say, we need to have a work session on the park ordinance, understand them, you know, maybe some people who, you know, don't agree, we need to come together. Are you guys free in two weeks to meet? And you guys say, yep, and we can meet. That's fine. That's, that's administrative. That's just trying to organize a meeting. But if he were to say, and, and, and what, how are you gonna vote? That crosses the line. Anytime there is a public meeting like this, if it's a regular meeting, we, we publish our, our meeting, times and dates and locations and, and that suffices. But if there's gonna be a special meeting, it has to have a minimum of two hours notice to the public and the press. We usually try to do more than two hours, but that's what the law requires. Lastly, about public records, any record that you have on any device that has to do with city government can be, is subject to Freedom of Information, Freedom of Information Act. So if you think about it, if, if it's my phone, which is over there, and I have a Tawny Town email, if Arthur emails me and says, what's the deal with this park regulation? And I email back, that's a public record. And if the press sends me an FOI and says, give me all communications to Arthur or to the city council regarding park ordinance, that email goes to the press. That's on my private phone, right? If you have a public device, anything on the public device goes. It's, it's the Houston Net Rule. If, if my phone is paid for by, or my computer or whatever by City of Tawny Town, anything on there, whether it's personal, my own private business or city can, can be subject to FOI. So those are very, two very broad aspects. It, 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 the FOI impacts everything that we do. We have all our meetings in, in, in public. We have websites with lots of information on there. You have Zoom ability. You have people who are afforded pub, you know, public comment. If somebody drops by and says, hey, I want to take a look at your budget or whatever, you know, we make a copy and give it to them. That's, that's a daily thing. That happens on a regular basis. The chief gets a FOI all the time, you know, people seeking, you know, a car wreck information or whatever. It's just, it is a regular part of business. And, and so for us, they're really, well, I mean, us, the, the council, the important things to, to remind you are the conversations about business coming before the council and the open records. Those are really the, the two big things. So that's kind of beginning to the end of the, of the memo. There is a lot more. I know I've talked here quite a bit, but are there, are there any specific questions or anything that I can, that I can further address? Okay. Well, oh, yes, Tim.
I did have some questions. I know we're now a first-class city.
Yeah.
That is a designation inside of Arkansas code. Those are cities over 2,500, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And what, what other, other thing qualifies to be a first-class city?
It, it's a population and it, once you receive, once you get past a certain population, you have to be a first-class city. Under 5,000, you have an election to do that. It happens on the.
In under 1,500? You said 2,500 to become a first-class city?
If, if you're under, it, once you, once you get over 5,000, you have to become a first-class city. So, but when you're in, in between, you can elect to advance to first-class city.
Or treated differently as a first-class city, is that correct?
There are some differences. Not a whole lot, to the point where I, I think it would serve everybody just to do away with the classifications. But it impacts some, the, the, really the biggest thing is that once you're a first-class city, you have to bid all purchases over a certain amount. And you, you do that, you have, you have to bid all, all capital projects over a certain amount. So if you're gonna build a sewer line, that, that's gonna be built, that's gonna be bid. That's a capital project. But if you were gonna buy computers, let's say you're gonna buy a $30,000 server, that's a piece of personal property. A second-class city wouldn't have to bid that by law, that your ordinance may require, but by law you don't have to bid it. As first-class city, you have to bid that. That's the biggest difference. The, the other differences are a little more minor. It, it still says recorder treasurer on her plate, but once we became first-class city, she became a city clerk. And city clerk role and treasurer, excuse me, recorder role are somewhat similar, but there are a few minor differences. And kind of throughout the code, there's some minor changes that, that have come about because of first-class status.
And when did that happen? When?
Mayor, when was that? Was that the summer? It was, it was earlier this summer. It's like June or May or, or sometime around then. And that, that, that classification change happens with the census. And it was abundantly clear that Tawny Town's gonna be over 5,000. And so the thought was to go ahead and do it now and, and get a jump on it. And, and so that's why it was done.
And then one more question. The, the idea of tort immunity, which, which I understand, but there must be somewhere, I mean, we can't, we, we can't do grievous acts that would cause harm. So where, where does that line get drawn?
Very complicated. Immunities are, are probably the most difficult thing to, to deal with in law. It has to do, when you're talking about torts, we're talking about state torts, right? And a tort is, is, is a, is a legal wrong. And there's different types of torts. There's the intentional torts, like a battery, when you hit somebody, or trespass is intentional tort. There's negligence, which is, has to do with your conduct being, you know, kind of below the standard of care. The law reads, the state, the statute itself reads it like it covers all torts. The courts have interpreted in Arkansas to mean that it mainly covers negligence. Although very confusingly, it has found various cities tort immune for some intentional torts. So it gets, it gets kind of complicated, but 99% of the time, it's gonna be negligence. So it's, it's the, the crack in the sidewalk type, type of scenario. But that only applies to state torts. That does not apply to constitutional violations or federal law. So if somebody has a civil rights claim under Arkansas Constitution or United States Constitution, tort immunity doesn't come into play. If somebody, if, if this fixture falls on my head and I sue the, the city, that's, that's negligence, that's tort immunity. That's kind of the difference.
So you could, we could actually drop that on your head?
Yeah, you could.
Would be clear, okay.
Yeah. There is a, the process for, it's a lengthy process, but if you are harmed by negligence by state entity in Arkansas, there's a claims process you can go through with the, in Little Rock. It, it's called a claims commission and it's this whole process you go through for that. And, and they do have money that they will pay out on negligence claims that can't get. The, the, the reason, that tort immunity comes from English common law. It's been in the law for a long time. And the thought behind it is that the public coffers would be picked dry if, if you paid out tort claims because you have streets and sidewalks and water lines and sewer lines. You have ditches, you have, you have stuff everywhere. There's no way you could keep those, you know, from people from tripping on a crack somewhere.
So the child gets injured in the park over here on a broken swing set?
Tort immunity.
Okay.
Yeah.
And if it's bad enough, they can go to Little Rock and get money for that potentially? But, okay.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah. And for that purpose, you, 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 you don't have liability insurance like a business would. Because if you have liability insurance, you're, you have to pay up to that li, whatever that liability coverage is. But what you do have is the city belongs to the municipal league, is a member of the municipal league, and they have a defense fund that defends when you do get sued. You, you pay a small, like a $2,000 thing upfront and they afford you your lawyer. And, and depending on the type of case it is, they, they could also pay your settlement or judgment, not, or 90% of it. And that's a program, that's one of the many programs, but that's one of the programs that the city belongs to, is that municipal defense. But it is mainly there for civil rights violations, lot to do with public, like police.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you all.
Now, hopefully that's clear as mud for everybody.
I understood every bit of it.
I thought you would, Larry. Moving on down to item number nine. In front of you in your packets, this is approval for our police chief to order three police cruisers that should be delivered in 2021. Council, the reason why I put this up for you, after talking to Chief Jensen this past week, as you know, that most of the vehicles that we purchase are on what's called state bid. And for the police package for the cars this year, several cities are ordering cars at this time for their departments and it takes a little while to get in line to get those cars. Also the availability of the cars. So feel free to jump in anytime, Corey. But anyway, Corey touched base with them. I don't know and I don't think that I'm aware of anybody objecting to our, what we put in the budget for this next year as far as what the police have asked for. So it is in your budget for approval to purchase them. But the issue that we're coming up against with these cars is they're gonna be about three months out. And if we wait to make our order, then it's gonna be pushed even farther out. And there's a definite possibility that if we wait till January 1 to order these cars, then we may not even see them till August or even October of next year. So pricing currently hasn't changed much at all. What we're, our intentions were is to order the new chargers. And they came in at a price of around 24, 688, which remarkably isn't much different from what it has been the last couple of years on these cars. The only difference in these cars that we could find, which I'm not real thrilled about, is the cars that we currently own, especially the ones that we got out of Kansas, which were kind of a demo-type car, all-wheel drives versus these new chargers that are, came, they come out with are not all-wheel drives or two-wheel drives. You know, some of the roads that you get into, fortunately in the city of Tawny Town, we have mostly paved streets. So hopefully we're not off, out four-wheeling in these cars. But the, the price difference in, in bumping it up to an all-wheel drive versus a two-wheel drive is allowing us to purchase three cars instead of two, basically. So if you went to an all-wheel drive car, the, the cost is significantly more. So anything you want to answer?
No, you pretty much covered it. It would be, and this is just seeking to place the order with the dealership so that when that dealership contacts Dodge and says, we're ordering these cars, the building of those cars start, they're not buying a bunch of cars and sitting at the dealership and I can go pick out three. So this is to get the ball rolling on this later, that in 2021, when these cars arrive, the installation process is still something else that will take time as well, possibly a month per car at the, at the most. So that's why I was asking for this, so we can get the ball rolling and, and also with potential new hires next year, these will be providing vehicles for new hires to drive currently that we don't have.
This is car-only, correct? Not light package or anything like?
Correct. This is just for the vehicle.
And this money was set aside for the 2020 budget, is that correct?
We have it included in your 2021 budget already. At the council, we've had, I know you're not privy to it, but we've had several meetings, work sessions on the budget. And I don't recall any of the council members wanting to make any changes to the police budget that was initiated. So yes, it's included for next year's budget, sir.
Okay. And we won't pay anything until we pick up the car when it's finished.
Yes, Arthur.
On getting three of them, are you gonna get rid of three of them or are you gonna keep those?
This is replacing three. This is just the start of a vehicle replacement. So the three that we replace will pass down to our new hires. Three officers that are currently in three cars, they will receive new cars. Our new hires will take the hand-me-downs. So.
We're trying to, we're trying to get it on a rotation schedule is what we're trying to do.
We couldn't continue to keep buying used vehicles like we were out of Kansas and expect.
Well, we did try to. Well, we did try to, because actually the, the Kansas vehicles have served us really well. You know, the mileage on them is about fifty thousand miles and we're getting quite a bit of use out of them. I think we had one of them go down with a motor issue, but it was still carried under warranty. So we got a car with a brand new motor as of this last week. So it's really not been a bad deal. The only problem with the Kansas deal is you gotta wait till they have cars.
And if they don't have cars and, and currently everything in our fleet is sixty to eighty thousand miles. So as we go forward, everything will come to the end of its life at the same time. So if we can plug some new ones in. That'll allow us in the future to go back to Kansas, um, and kind of offset that cost for a year.
Does this pull any of the older Crown Vics out of use?
We're, we're down to one Crown Vic. Um, that one right now is what our part-time officers use. With these, this will give us, uh, one of our vehicles as a spare for full-time officers. So if any of their full-time vehicles go down, they can jump in a car that's outfitted the same as what they're used to. Jump in it and work. And then we still have the Crown Vic for part-time and, and the backup to the backup.
That one up the shop, is it? Is it out of service?
It is. Um, by March, we spent over fifteen hundred dollars in maintenance on it. I believe our last auction. I don't know, Mayor, if you remember. How much they brought, but it wasn't that much. It right now requires about seven hundred, eight hundred dollars of repairs. So it just was hitting the part point of costing too much to, to keep for what it was. It's got about a hundred and forty thousand miles on it. That was one of the ones that we were handed down from Washington County in two thousand thirteen when we took over.
And these are all. These are this twenty-four, six eighty-eight, this is brand new.
Right, brand new, zero miles.
And you're gonna, to, to equip it, um, time you put light bars and the wrap package and. All the above on it, you're going to spend what, ten, twelve thousand roughly?
Ten, Cory. And that will be paid from our nine eighty-eight funds.
That includes the device that we put on the front of them?
No.
Not, not included on these right now. Um, when I have, when we get later in the year, possibly when nine eighty-eight recoups. Revisit to purchase, um, additional starches.
So you're going to have about thirty-five grand in each one of them then?
Roughly, yes.
Time the dust settles, yes. Have you priced a new pickup lately?
Yes, I have. If you can buy a good pickup for that.
About eighty grand last one I looked at.
Can tell you the next pursuit rated model that is. The next cheapest, uh, is the Dodge Durango and on state bid, it comes in just a little over thirty-two thousand. So that's why we're looking at chargers just based off the price point, really. Allowing us, like the mayor said, to get three instead of two.
So to accept a motion to allow Mr. Jensen to go ahead and put these on order.
I'll make a motion. I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Don?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Moving on down to item number C, approval of the two thousand twenty-one city budget council. I'm going to ask that you table. This for this evening and, and the reason why I was, uh, kind of cruising over it again for one last look. And, uh, noticed that there was an error in your street budget. And I don't know where Pat got confused at in it, um, but he's showing that a million dollars coming out of this year's budget. For the street, uh, but unfortunately the vendor that has, um, got the bid on doing that street is not going to be able to start on it until March. And then he's also showing nine hundred and fifty coming out for next year's budget. So. Somewhere he's, he's gotten off just a little bit. Um, I can tell you that, uh, James and I met. With APAC, which did get the high bid on this, uh, which was one point eight six million dollars. For the Fletcher Road contract. We've successfully, I think renegotiated the contract down some two hundred and fifty thousand dollars so far. And they're going to be issuing new contracts for us on that. So there, you're going to be looking at more like one point six six million. Or should be one point six million roughly in change. For that project, but it's going to be coming out of, uh, the twenty twenty-one budget one hundred percent. So. Like I said, I was going to ask for approval tonight. Um, and I'm sure we could pass part of it. If we wanted to, but I would prefer that we just did all in one lump package. For December, if it's all right by you guys. So at this time I would accept a motion to table.
Motion to table. Okay.
Got plenty of them. Roll call, please.
Arthur?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
We're bringing it up the CC meeting December.
Sure. Item nine, or excuse me, nine D, this is approval of a policy that will allow, uh, public employees to continue participation in the city's healthcare plan percent. Arkansas Code twenty-four, twelve, one thirty-two. Again, counsel, I'm going to ask that you table, uh, this one as well. And my main reasoning for it is we don't know, or I don't know, I don't really feel comfortable and I haven't had a chance to talk, uh, with Mr. Ackman enough about this one. My real hangup with this deal is, is not that I don't want to allow. Employees that have retired from the city to be able to continue to draw insurance. My issue that I have with it is what, and I'll give you a scenario. Let's say we hire somebody in here for a week. And all of a sudden said employee says, you know what? I've decided I'm going to retire. And now that person is eligible to go on our insurance for the rest of their life. Now granted with this deal, they have to pay for it out of their pocket. But what effect does that have on our group policy? And I use Todd Wigzigman as example. He's killing me. He's killing me. So. I, like I said, I hadn't had a chance to talk to Mr. Ackman enough about it and, and to, to do more research about this. It's not that I'm against it at all. But in the same token. I think we need to have some policy adjustments with our employee policy manual. To work this through, don't you agree? Okay. Right. So with that said, I would accept a motion to table.
Motion.
To table.
Roll call.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Moving down nine E, this is approval to purchase, uh, of a welcome to Tonnie Town sign. Mr. Penzo, your name is on this. If you want me to describe it more, I will, or if you want to take the lead, go ahead.
Well. We can both do it, that's fine. I talked to Dana. And I told him. That we wanted the signs. But as of right now. We don't know which ones they want. So I thought we was going to put it on Facebook, but whichever way y'all want to do it is fine with me, but. He said. The, the time of the year, the way it is right now. To have them made right now. After they pour them, it's going to be five to six weeks. Before we can. Move them around, get them around. Cause he said, if you move them too quick, then you're going to break them.
What was the, um. The highest price that you brought us in last time?
The one, the, the state of Arkansas one was, was thirty-five hundred dollars. And the, the other two, like that one and the one that was JB Hunt Park. They're, they're three thousand.
Okay.
But now I don't. I don't want to step on James's toes.
Well, I know you said there was an issue possibly because, uh, Mr. Clark had them add the city logo in one of them. So, and this is just going to be a rough guess and I'll ask Mr. Ackman the question. Can my counsel make a motion to, uh, purchase said sign? Not to exceed a limit of let's say four thousand dollars in this year's budget. And that way, if there's an additional cost for the logo of the city. And then we can still put it out for some sort of Facebook or type vote. Then you have the money obligated to it. Would that, would that be fair for you?
Yeah, that's, I don't. I don't see it being over, I don't know. Well, I don't, I can't see it being over four thousand dollars, but now it might, I don't know.
So is that enough or do you want more?
Will that include the base, the bases? That doesn't include the base?
No, 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 that's just, that's just, that's just a sign.
And then we go from there. We're responsible for putting it up.
And just like that one there, that was, that was a JB Hunt Park that had the base on it, but. This is just a sign, what, what he's quoting us.
Well, I'm saying is to get the sign made, even if we got to store it in the city shop until we have a place to put it and then we can put the base, we can at least get it ordered and the money's allocated for it. Cause I'm sure it's going to cost more money for the base and we don't know if we're going to have to buy. A, a plot of land yet either.
Yeah, I don't know.
Cause I haven't been real successful to get people to donate very many pieces of land lately.
We was. We was hoping to get one on here east of town donated, but I don't know if James found anything about that yet.
I have not contacted, uh. Mr. Taldo and, uh, but I don't think that will be an issue. Like I said, the only question that I have currently. And I emailed Justin, he just hasn't had time to, to get back with me yet on putting a sign in a, a utility easement. So we'll need to talk about that a little bit before we, before we do it. And then I'll, uh, visit with the highway department about putting one out on the west side of town. That one will be in the state right away.
Right.
So to me, to speed things along here, I would think. If you would make a motion, uh, to purchase a sign with, um, spending limit of four thousand dollars. And it should, should suffice. And then we can put it up and they can vote on whichever sign they want, if you think that will cover the cost.
So we're just going to do one sign?
No.
Two sign.
Two.
That's.
So it's eight thousand.
Eight thousand, okay.
Okay.
It does not include the base cost.
Right.
No, no.
No.
And. He did say. Well, like the one on the. JB Hunt Park. The base. When they, when they make those signs. And the same way we did over here in, in the Harris Verona Park. That sign has got, is got a. I think it's two pieces of rebar in it. And the base.
Has to sit down in there.
Will have a, some plastic pipe in it. Or that rebar goes down inside of it and there ain't nobody going to go up there and move it, I'll guarantee you, because them things are, they're heavy. So when, when you, when you set them down that hole, they're not going anywhere unless somebody. Thumps it for the hell hard with a vehicle, but that'd be the only way to move it.
So again, you want to make a motion that you don't spend them more than eight thousand for it?
Right, I'll make a, I'll make a motion, um, on the JB Hunt sign that we.
Appropriate four thousand per sign, not including the base.
Decided which one?
So you're making a motion that they purchase the JB Hunt sign?
Yes, sir.
So you don't want the public to vote on it?
Power.
Clarifying.
Yes, I'm making that, that motion.
Okay.
And I like, no.
Okay.
Have a motion on the table. Let me make sure I get you right, Gene. A motion to, uh, spend eight thousand dollars on the JB Hunt sign. Correct?
Not including the base.
Not including the base. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, but let's, we're going to discuss this here first before we vote on it.
Okay. I have a motion and a second discussion.
I thought, well, like I said, it don't make me no difference. But I thought it was, we was going to put it up. Let the people vote on this.
And I'm not opposed to that.
No more than eight thousand.
Not opposed to that at all.
No matter what sign.
No matter what sign, the general public picks.
So would you like to amend your motion?
That's what I'm looking at Justin for. If I can amend that, yes, I will amend that.
And then I'll.
You accept the amendment?
Right.
Okay. Now, any further discussion? We're killing our recorder here.
I have to do this twice?
Three times.
Okay.
And then, and then. When and how does that, this get pushed out to the public?
My suggestion is, and you guys tell us how you want to do it, but, um. If, uh, I think I suggested last time that if Ms. Dowdna, you'd have to ask Don if, um. She wouldn't mind posting it on her community page. I think that'd be a great place to post it. Uh, if you want to post it on the police department's page, uh, I think if you have too many places, you'll create a cluster. So pick.
And then you can just share them.
Yeah, pick a Facebook page to have it posted to. And I think you can also, can you not set those dudes up to have like a poll? Okay. So my suggestion would be to make it simple, to allow Corey to take the pictures, put it on his page, and then he can share it with whomever and, and create a vote. If that's fair enough.
Right.
Yep.
And then whatever the public chooses, then that's what you go with.
What do you think? A week, a week timeframe, two weeks? How long to vote?
Between now and Cal.
Now and the Cal meeting?
Yep, uh, well, why don't you put it up there until the day before the Cal? And that way it comes for the Cal and they know which ones picked. Does that have to be included in the motion to strike?
Say, do we have to make a motion on that?
Okay. Gene, would you mind amending your motion?
To include the day before Cal meeting. For our final decision.
And to post it in the police department's Facebook page. Okay.
But. Let me, let me throw one more thing in chief. If you're going to do it like on that, number them either one, two and three, so they'll know. Which one they're voting on and then we can go from there.
And make sure that's consistent between.
Fair enough.
Yes.
Right, right.
Okay.
Are we good?
I'm good.
We're good.
Are you good?
Okay, and my only other thing, we're gonna, we're gonna allocate this money and we, we are not one hundred percent sure that we're going to. Get space allocated for them, is.
We're going to get the signs made. And if they have to sit in the garage for two years, that's what they'll do.
I'm good with that.
So the, so the start time for citizens to vote, do you know when?
As soon as Mr. Jensen can get it posted.
Okay, and then the cutoff date is the day before?
Day before Cal.
Okay, got it.
Roll call.
Gene?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on down nine F, this is going to be, yes, sorry.
Can I throw one more wrench in there? It's not going to affect that vote. Not to step on Arthur's toes, but I did go talk to the sign guy and basically just to ask him if we had, if we could change the lettering. Or if we could change other aspects of the sign, if we could incorporate our city logo. Is that something that the council would like to pursue or do we want to just go with this?
We already did that because we added it to eight thousand instead of the six thousand.
So do we want to, we want to get some, um, concept drawings with different lettering, different logos?
I, I, I would think that the more options that the good people of Tonnie Town have, the more engaged they're going to be and that's better. My thought.
And but the more options you give them, the less.
That's true too. And it might water down the boat.
Right. I think if you could consolidate it to three signs, they'd be a lot simpler. Okay, we'll, we'll get something put together.
I mean, probably depending upon. The sign itself. Might be easier to incorporate. A logo on, onto a bigger. Piece, so to speak, as opposed to.
Now, it, is that different than the sign that's out here at the park?
Yes.
I mean, the, the grapes and the lettering.
Different shape. Well, I think he used those, uh, those grapes.
Is that, is that the same grapes, the same lettering from the sign here at Harris? The, the sign here, is, the grapes and the, and the font, the lettering, is that the same as what's here at the Harry's Spinoza Park out here on the, on the road?
The same guys making them, that's what you're talking about?
No, is it the same, uh, artwork? Is it the same lettering? I know it's the same maker, Dana, but is the, is the, are the grapes the same? Is the lettering exactly? I know it's the same maker, Dana, but is the, is, are the grapes the same? Is the lettering exactly the same as this one here? Or is it different?
Don't get me to lie to you, I don't know.
Okay. And doesn't matter?
I think those are the grapes from the sign in, in the park.
Okay.
Because he told me when I talked to him that it wouldn't be those grapes anyway.
Okay.
Hey, James.
This is just a concept?
Yes.
That's fine. It, it's a curiosity, it's probably not even worth asking, so I'm sorry.
Moving right along. We all good?
Yep.
I don't wanna turn it into a five-month tracker debacle. Nine F, uh, this is approval of an increase to the contract with Elm Springs District Court. Once again, counsel, I would appreciate if you would table this, as we just received this at about four o'clock today. Uh, we had to have Mr. Eichmann's stamp on this, so if you don't mind, I would request it to be tabled.
Make a motion to table? Second it.
Roll call.
Don.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Gene.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Arthur.
Yes.
Amber.
Yes.
Nine G, uh, this is approval of resolution, amending resolution, blah, 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 and amending the percentage of distribution of a one cent citywide sales tax and use tax as provided in ordinance nine zero zero five dash zero four dash two one two. Again, counsel, what we're doing is we're moving, um, the forty percent down to thirty percent out of your water, and the one cent sales tax, and putting ten percent in two streets is what we're doing with this resolution as discussed at our Cal meeting.
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion, second, discussion. Roll call.
Arthur.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Gene.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Amber.
Yes.
Item nine H, counsel, this is approval of authorizing the mayor to enter into an amended inner local agreement with Washington County Ambulance Authority. Um, counsel, if you turn to that section in your packet, uh, what is, uh, being put before you this evening is Washington County Ambulance Authority. They're not necessarily raising the rates that we pay. Uh, in essence, what they're, have done is, uh, there's, uh, agency in Northwest Arkansas that, um, kinda tells you what they think that your population is at a current time, although the census tract will not be out till twenty twenty-three. Um, I think they're estimating that Tawny Town's gonna be somewhere around thirty-three hundred is what they're showing, thirty-five seventy-three in twenty twenty-four. Um, twenty twenty-one, they're saying that Tawny Town is thirty-three sixty-seven. Um, their, the contract that we've had with them in the past is, uh, six dollars and six cents per capita, based on, uh, twenty-four hundred and sixty people. So they're asking that all cities, uh, go with this new rate charge, or an amended rate charge going by the estimate, um, that Northwest Arkansas Council, um, is showing to be the population. Um, in essence, you know, the discussion that the ambulance authority has had, uh, about this is that, you know, if we waited till twenty twenty-three, when the census tracts come in, um, you know, it's our thought process that we're gonna be somewhere around five thousand to fifty-five hundred people in the city of Tawny Town. Um, so if you take six dollars and six cents and multiply it by five thousand, it's gonna be significantly more than this is, so, um, a little bit of the thought process is, is that they're slowly building us up to that rate when we finally get there. Um, yeah, I know, they're getting a little extra money out of us, too, right now, to help them out, so, um, we're not the Lone Rangers in this charge, or they're asking us of all members of the authority. So, um, you know, I don't think it's an unfair charge that we're gonna see somewhere around twenty thousand dollars a year. Um.
We're probably above that number anyway.
I'm pretty sure we are, I'm pretty sure we are. So, uh, it doesn't change our rate drastically in what we're paying them, and I don't think that Tawny Town could afford its own ambulance service for twenty thousand dollars.
No, no way.
Nope.
No way.
So would ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Have a motion, a second, discussion. Roll call.
Tim.
Yes.
Amber.
Yes.
Gene.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Arthur.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Moving on down, this is an added item, number nine I, uh, Christmas bonuses, counsel, last year, I came before you, and, uh, our budget, uh, we were doing really, really good with, and we came before you last year to ask that we give our employees, uh, a Christmas bonus. Um, and I'm, I'm, once again, you know, we've, uh, been keeping an eye on the budget all year, especially with the COVID virus, and trying to determine what, uh, the test with COVID. Um, you know, currently we are up, um, and we've been up ever since it started. Uh, our budget is sitting, I think, very well. Um, we're not struggling anywhere, so once again, I come before you to ask to give all full-time employees, uh, a Christmas bonus this year, and we'd like to give it to them before Christmas hits, so the first pay period in December is when I would like to issue these checks for, for them to go spend it on their families, hopefully is the idea, so. You know, a lot of times, you know, we can give pay raises, and we can give them stuff for their retirement, but it's not in their pockets, and, and for, for this, I think this is something we can do, that actually puts money in their pocket, and they actually can see it, so. Um, again, I'm asking to give a thousand dollars per person, uh, which would roughly cost the, the city twenty-five thousand dollars is what we would be spending on this bonus, so I'm requesting that to be approved again.
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion?
I will second.
A second, discussion?
Does that include any part-time personnel?
It's just for full-time.
Okay.
Uh, I, I don't know what salaries are, a thousand dollars is roughly what percentage of that on average, do you know?
You know, uh, what's a starting officer make, Corey, thirty-two, thirty-three, rough, not counting benefits?
It's three percent, that's nice, it's a nice bump.
Yeah, I mean, it depends on the person. You know, what, James, what's your salary base? Sixty-some?
No, that's quite. Honestly, honestly, I couldn't tell you offhand what it is.
Right. So, you know, for upper-tier people, it's, it's not a very big bump. Uh, but, um, what I've tried to do is just make it straight across the board, so that way I'm not showing any favoritism with anybody. Any more discussion?
City council considered full-time, sir.
Are you taking applications?
Nowhere near, are you full-time, Larry? Roll call.
Gene.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Tim. Tim.
I'm going to Epstein.
Larry.
Yes.
Arthur.
Yes.
Amber.
Yes.
And moving on down, comments from our alderman, I'm gonna start Larry.
Don't have a whole lot to, uh, we went over a lot of stuff tonight, and I tried to retain all of it, uh, thank you, Justin. But, uh, I'm just glad to see everybody out. Hope everybody voted, hope everything goes just exactly where they voted. Carry on.
Mr. Dowdner.
Pretty much same thing, hope everybody took the right to vote, and don't care who you voted for, as long as everybody voted. And that's all I got, thank you.
Tim.
Uh, I'm still trying to absorb everything, but I appreciate your patience. Thank you, Justin, in particular, that was very informative.
Gene.
No comment.
Ms. Ibarra.
I have no comments.
Mr. Penzo.
I'm good.
All right, comments from the mayor, okay, let's see, where do I start? Um, we went, uh, to Little Rock this past week, uh, for our grant presentation. Uh, we went before them, uh, for a fifty-fifty grant applications, what we went down there for, requesting, um, a hundred and twelve thousand dollars for our parks. The COVID deal had a big effect on, on how we had to present this year, a little different from last year, uh, to kinda give you an idea, we, um, we had to be invited to come to this event, uh, which we were fortunate again this year to make the top ten, uh, in our area. Um, there were several cities, Grabot, uh, Gentry, I think, was also there, Fort Smith was down there, um, a lot of different folks applying for a lot of different things. Um, our appointment was for eleven o'clock, uh, we got there and they, um, had difficulties with their projector, so we didn't get to come in till about one o'clock. So they, uh, wouldn't let everybody, I, I didn't get to listen to everybody's presentations, cause they were only allowing you, your group in to make your pitch, so I didn't get to hear what everybody else said, to know what changes I can make, if ever I have to go back before them again. Um, I, I do feel good about it, um, I think we presented a, a solid grant for them to look at, uh, specifically, uh, we were looking at reu- reusing, uh, some of our park and remodeling a vast majority of our park, uh, with this funding. Um, we won't know anything for probably a couple of weeks on it, whether we received it or not, so, uh, I am looking forward to see if we did make it, as far as last year's event, they only awarded one city the funding, so I kinda heard through grapevine gossip in the hallways down there that they were looking at possibly spreading some of this money out a little bit, so it, it may be that we don't get a hundred percent of what we asked for, they only give us a portion of it, and I'm good with that, so, um, hopefully everything went well. Um, also, put on your calendar, uh, we are having our annual Christmas meeting, um, on the eighteenth at eleven AM, so if you'd like to attend, uh, feel free to, to bring your family. But this December eighteenth at eleven AM, uh, come on up, we'll have it here at City Hall, and we'll try to do our level best to do social distancing, even if we have to open up other offices for people to sit, okay? And then last but not least, um, I wanted to bring you some stuff before you tonight, and, and I asked Mr. Eichmann to come up and present to you, to tell you a little bit about what council's expectations are, and, and what their duties and everything are, I, I also wanted to bring before you, and in front of you, um, is, um, our future land use map, so if you can, grab your packets up. All right, counsel, the reason why I brought this for you tonight, uh, and specifically, I've got two new council members that weren't sitting on this body when all this got passed. Um, in front of you is your future land use map. And, and I want you to take this big sheet home with you tonight, because this signifies what all those colors mean. Uh, to give some new council members a background on this. Ms. Courtney McNair, along with, uh, Ms. Juliet Ritchie, they're with Garber, um, put this all together, along with Mr. Eichmann, and our, our planning board. Gosh, when was this, two years ago? Roughly two years ago. Um, this wasn't a whimsical deal, this wasn't something that was off the cuff, this wasn't something that was a knee-jerk reaction. What took place was a year-long meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting, of discussions with members of our planning board to create a future land use map for the city of Tawny Town. Um, as a matter of fact, we, um, we held these chambers open, um, all day. Uh, I can't remember the date that they did this on, but Ms. McNair and, and Garber and associates and a bunch of people showed up with maps spread all over this room. And at that time, citizens were invited to come in and, and give their input to this map. And they took pens out, and they drew all over it. I mean, all over it, of what they wanted to see for the city of Tawny Town, and it was very important to me at the time to have input from our citizens. Because that's the only way that I know I can sit here all day and tell you what I think Tawny Town should look like, and I'm gonna tell you that I'm gonna be biased about that. As well, I think there, that there's many that sit on this council that will be biased, too. But I bring this up here and show you this because this was created by this body. The people that created the maps, our planning board, Courtney, Mr. Eichmann, and everybody else that helped put this together, brought this before the city council. And like Mr. Eichmann stated to you in, in the beginning of this meeting, this is something that you guys created. Nobody else. And I say that to say this. If you do not like the way Tawny Town is headed, if you do not like the way things are being built, the way people have been selling their land, and, and I might add, I don't, I can't tell you how many millionaires that you have made, citizens of Tawny Town over the past five years, you have the ability to change this. You changed it from what it was before to what it is today. And if you don't like what you see on this map, then what you need to do, and, and I'm not, I'm not scolding anybody here, but what you need to do is go before the planning board and voice your opinion on what you think needs to be changed to, or what you would rather see. But I tell you this now because there have been developers and, and business owners, and mom and pops, and, and families that have come to Tawny Town in the past two years. And I contend that the reason why a lot of these people have come to Tawny Town over the last few short years is because of this map that you guys created. You guys reached out and told the world, this is what you wanted Tawny Town to look like. And now you've had developers and individuals and businesses that are taking you up on the proposition of what you want Tawny Town to look like. And I know it's hard, I know change is hard, and I know there's this, we laugh about it called NIMBY, not in my backyard. I know it's difficult when something starts to get built in your backyard. But it's gonna become even more difficult, I think, as you go forward, and we have people make application to build what you have on this map. Cause it's gonna come to you to explain your vote. And I caution you, and you can ask Mr. Eichmann, I caution you to not use the language because I don't like it. You have to justify your reasoning, I think. Now, you can sit idle and not say a word if that's what you choose to do. But I wanted to make sure each one of you all knew, or know, or have knowledge of what you voted on two years ago. And what, two years ago, this is what you wanted Tawny Town to look like. And like I, like I said, if you want it to look different than what you see on that map before you tonight, you have the ability to make those changes. Keep in mind, it took us a year to create this. And we gave public input to create this. Matter of fact, we gave you all input to create this. And I'm not about to tell you that is, this is a utopian Tawny Town. It's not. But that's where we're at, and that's what, that's what our planning staff have to work with day in and day out, when people come in and ask, hey, what does Tawny Town want? What do they wanna see? What do they want us to build? All they can do is point to this map and say, this is what they passed two years ago. I can't tell you what they wanna see today. Your planning board, believe it or not, has taken direction by the passage of your votes of this map on how they direct people in public when they come before them to ask and request to build things that you see in Tawny Town. So please do me a favor, take this home with you and study it. And like I said, if there, if there's something different that you wanna see that you don't like, you don't like how things are going in Tawny Town, don't wait till somebody comes before you ask and to build it to say no. I think we owe it to them, the people that are actually spending the money here in Tawny Town, to have some sort of idea of what you guys see that you want, to be fair. You know, and as we sit here this evening, uh, on, on, on this election night, I remind this council that you were elected to make these decisions. You were voted in by the citizens of Tawny Town to make the hard decisions. I know it's fun, and, and everybody wants to say, man, I'm a councilman. Boy, it's a great job. But you were elected. But you were elected to make hard choices. And that's what it'd be, that's what it is to be a public official. And I hope you respect that. Mr. Eichmann, you have any comments? With that, I would ask to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, sir. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Hey, have a great evening, everybody. Thank you.